Uh.
How are you?
What's up, Nick?
How are you? Good to see you again.
Hey, Jorge.
Yes, sir.
You can probably have me do your introduction on the rules with regards to commercial meeting, maybe after, either after public hearing or after your presentation.
The what now?
For the rules of the road for access by the public, the key numbers, the passwords, stuff like that. May I present?
Yeah, will you do that?
After, after public hearing.
Okay. Whatever you want.
Okay. You tell me when.
No, you tell me when.
Because it is, what I should do then, Mayor, is because this is a public hearing, I should probably do it before the public hearing.
Whatever.
This would come before, before roll. So I would read this and then I would do-
Which one, talking about this one?
Yeah, PH one.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Someone check my television.
How you doing?
How are you?
This is the dream.
Ready to go? Bless and love. That aggressive.
That it is.
Yeah, we're still going.
We're still doing. Well, we'll, uh-
I think last year I might have forgotten to mention her.
Oh, no. Yeah, so we'll double do the end.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh-
How you doing, big boy?
So for this one here, Tracy Page will be online, which is Brain Awareness Month. Her name is Tracy Page.
I know, I worked with American Red Cross, I mean Relay for Life for years. Till she moved on.
She moved, uh, that one there?
Huh?
She moved there.
Yeah.
So what time, so when, when can I bring that up about this Corporal Patrick Zadyer?
I'm gonna do it right over here, after we do this.
Oh, so you're gonna, I thought you would do your presentations first, and I'd do it after your presentation?
You can, if you want, they're long, it's up to you. Whatever you want. That's what you wanna do?
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I don't see the mother here yet.
All right.
So, and whether she's here or not.
All right, we'll do it.
All right.
No problemo.
Otherwise, you good today?
Good, I don't feel good, but I'm good.
Really?
I'm sold on that.
Are you, really?
I think I'm drinking Gatorade a lot, 'cause I'm thirsty. I think it's holding soda in my face. I'm doing a lot. Who knows? Can't get it right for some reason. Hi! How are you, Jorge? Oh, good. Tell her she's got three minutes tonight. Okay, read it fast.
Test, test one, two. Test, test one, two.
Did you get everything done? Oh, still good, huh?
Straight from- I thought-
Oh, we're doing it.
You do, Mr. Mayor, if I may read the title of the item into the record, it's PH number one, with your permission there? Can you hear me okay? Good. This is a public hearing item, it's the public hearing for the city's action plan for community development block grant, that's CDBG Plan Amendments relating to the proposed Resolution Number 2021 R19 on this agenda, creating the city's rental, mortgage, and utility assistance programs for utilization of the community development block grant, that's the CDBG CD3 funds, and approving the amendment to the 2020-2021 Action Plan consistent with the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan for Housing and Community Development Programs, directing the city manager to submit the action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing the city's city manager to execute all required documents, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, providing for an effective date, and on the agenda would be proposed Resolution Number 2021-21R19, which is item number seventeen on the agenda. This is a public hearing, and Mayor, just really quickly for the record, this is a virtual, and this is a, an in-person public meeting with a virtual option, to the extent possible, members of the public who would choose to be heard on this item, public hearing number one, or any other item, have basically three ways to get into the meeting, as you know from your experience. The first of which is that people can call in, the phone number for the record is one dash four zero eight four one eight ninety-three eighty-eight. Folks who would choose to log in and use the virtual system under the WebEx program, the login number, the access code for the record is one seven three four eighty-two sixty-two nineteen, or folks may in fact submit a comment via email, which will be read into the record by Ms. Dabina and/or by the city clerk or deputy clerk. Registration can be done on a pre-registration basis by accessing the meeting via the WebEx platform. Again, at the time of the public input, which will be specified by the mayor, comments will be submitted via email, will be read into the record. The public who have pre-registered, which is also possible, and have accessed the meeting via the WebEx platform, will be identified and told to unmute their phone and a comment on the item. The person will be asked to identify themselves by stating their first name, last name, and their address, that would be instructed, then push the star three to raise their hand to speak. Mr. Jonathan Benia is on the dais, and he's our Wizard of Oz who will access the persons who in fact dialed in and called in, et cetera. And the public who did not have a chance to register, still have a chance to be heard, will be called also, identified by the area code and their phone number. Again, first name, last name, and Mr. Benia who's on the dais will be able to coordinate that for you. As a matter of law and record in the city, the public comments are limited to three minutes on not just PH one, but any other item in the agenda this evening where the public would seek right of access. Again, for the record, we're operating under the Governor's Executive Order adopted on May third, two thousand twenty-one, Executive Order twenty-one dash one zero two, which returned the city commissioners back to the dais, allowed access by the public who are here this evening, and members of the public who could not or chose not to attend publicly, physically, can do so by the methods I just described. Mayor and Commission, that's the presentation, thank you very much. Appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner-
Present.
Vice Mayor Good.
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Seiple.
I'm here.
Mayor Otis.
Here.
City Manager Dodge.
Here.
City Attorney Goran.
Here.
We have Goran.
Thank you, please rise for the pledge led by Vice Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Uh, we have some presentations, I'm gonna read some proclamations. First one is Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive neurodegenerative brain order, typically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments. And whereas Alzheimer's is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States, is the only cause of death in the top ten that has no cure, no treatment, and no way to slow its progression. And whereas more than six billion people in the United States are living with Alzheimer's, including approximately five hundred eighty thousand in Florida and forty-three thousand six hundred twenty-seven in Broward County. And whereas there are more than half a million dedicated caregivers who provide unpaid care at home in our state valued at more than ten point six billion dollars. And whereas researchers in Florida and around the world continue their efforts to develop scientific discoveries that could one day bring about a world without Alzheimer's disease. And whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and their families can gain access to treatment medications, enroll in critical research trials, fully participate in planning for the future, and receive care and support from the Alzheimer's Association. And whereas there's a need to raise awareness about Alzheimer's disease and to honor all the caregivers who support and care for loved ones with Alzheimer's disease. And whereas on June twentieth, December solstice, the Alzheimer's Association celebrates the longest day, which the day with the most light is the day we fight. Now therefore, I frank Seoretis by the authority vested me as the mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, on behalf of the city commission, to hereby proclaim that June twenty-twenty-one be officially designated Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and June twenty be declared the longest day in the city of Pembroke Pines. Ms. Page, did you wanna say something?
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would like to thank, uh, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Vice Mayor, and all of the commissioners for your support of, uh, the five hundred eighty thousand Floridians that are living with Alzheimer's disease. You know, the COVID-19 pandemic has had a devastating impact on all of us, but especially those that are living with Alzheimer's and other forms of dementia. In Florida, Alzheimer's and dementia deaths rose eighteen point five percent during this time. So we thank you very much for raising awareness for Alzheimer's. We appreciate all the work that your city does to ensure better quality of life for your residents. No one should be on this road or this journey alone, and the Alzheimer's Association is here for the residents every step of this journey. We provide education, awareness, support, and services. So in conclusion, thank you again for proclaiming June Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Okay, our next proclamation is LGBTQ Pride Month. City has always participated in Pride Month. Whereas the city of Pembroke Pines cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equality and freedom. And whereas all are welcome in the city of Pembroke Pines to live, work, play, and every family in any shape deserves a place to call home where they are all safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes, front to our fundamental principles. And whereas Pride Month began in June of nineteen sixty-nine, is one, one-year anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City. After LGBTQ and allied friends rose up and fought against the constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that has since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines appreciates the culture, civic, and economic contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus, LGBTQ community would strengthen our social welfare. And whereas imperative that young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression, feel safe, feel valued, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas despite being marginalized, LGBTQ people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. Now therefore, I frank Seoretis by the authority vested me as mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, on behalf of the city commission, to hereby proclaim the month of June twenty-twenty-one is LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Pembroke Pines, and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ community and to actively promote the principles of liberty, liberty, and justice. Our next proclamation, Relay for Life Broward Power Day. Whereas the American Cancer Society is the largest nonprofit founder of cancer research. And whereas the American Cancer Society Relay for Life movement is one of the world's largest peer-to-peer fundraising events to save lives from cancer. And whereas Relay for Life is a community of the like-minded survivors, caregivers, volunteers, and participants who believe that the future can be freed from cancer. And whereas funds raised through Relay for Life directly support breakthrough research, twenty-four-seven support for people with cancer, access to life-saving screenings, and much more. And whereas participants of Relay for Life join together to celebrate cancer survivors, pay tribute to those lost to the disease, and raise funds to end cancer once and for all. And whereas we will join others throughout Broward County, united by the impacts of cancer in our communities at Relay for Life Broward Power. Now therefore, I frank Seoretis by the authority vested me as mayor of Pembroke Pines, Florida, to hereby proclaim June fifth, two thousand twenty-one, as Relay for Life Broward Power Day in Pembroke Pines, Florida, and encourage citizens to help save lives from cancer by participating in a two thousand twenty Relay for Life Broward Power hosted at Cooper City High School on June fifth, two thousand twenty-one.
And Mayor?
Yes.
That, uh, you mentioned that that's gonna be held, uh, this Saturday, June fifth, at Cooper City High School?
I did.
And the time is from three to nine PM?
Okay.
So that folks will know when they can, um, when they can be there?
Thank you, Tricia.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, now we have a National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Whereas every day, a hundred Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly thirteen thousand gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are twenty-five times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries. And whereas support for the second amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from dangerous people. And whereas Hadiya Pendleton, fifteen-year-old teenager, who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade, and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later in Chicago. And whereas to help honor Hadiya and the hundred Americans whose lives are cut short and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June fourth, two thousand twenty-one, as the seventh National Gun Violence and Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing an orange, choosing this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when in the woods. An orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas the tragic events at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, where gun violence resulted in the loss of seventeen students and faculty, and the wounding of seventeen others, brings greater attention to the need for awareness. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on the first weekend in June of two thousand twenty-one, to help raise awareness about gun violence in America, and to honor the lives of gun violence victim supervisors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and to encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children and our community safe. Now therefore, I frank Seoretis by the authority vested me as the mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, to hereby proclaim June fourth, two thousand twenty-one, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, and encourages all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human life. I know we have someone to speak, would you like to speak, Annis?
Yes, thank you. Hi, my name's Jessica Kennedy, and I'd like to thank you, Mayor Otis, and the city commission of Pembroke Pines for your unwavering support for gun violence prevention. You've always supported not only this issue, but Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America. You recognize the epidemic of gun violence in this country and the daily gun violence that plagues our cities and counties. I know that once the appropriate gun violence legislation is passed by Congress, that you will work with our local law enforcement agencies to effect the changes that we need to combat this epidemic. I accept this proclamation on behalf of Moms Demand Action, and thank you, Mayor Otis, and the whole city commission for proclaiming June fourth, two thousand twenty-one, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in Pembroke Pines. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor? Yes, Commissioner Casil.
Thank you very much. Uh, apropos of this item, I was very sad today to learn that, uh, former Senator Daphne Campbell's son was shot down and killed in Miami-Dade County just recently. Um, she posted a very heartfelt, um, um, social media announcement, the kind only a mother who loses her child could post, and, uh, it was very, very touching, and it just goes to show that this can happen to anyone. It's not something that, uh, uh, that has any rhyme or reason. Um, young man minding his own business, just being in his own neighborhood where, uh, neighborhood he knew and grew up, um, um, gunfire that had nothing to do with him killed him. And it's just horrific, it happens every day in the United States, and, uh, we just can't be free if we can't walk in our own communities without fear of being gunned down. So, something needs to happen, and I'm very, very thankful that we've, uh, had this proclamation.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, if I may?
Uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Commissioner, uh, Seiple, go ahead.
Seiple, thank you, Mayor. Um, and I, and I, uh, Ms. Kennedy, thank you for, you know, for being here and representing and speaking, uh, you know, speaking in favor of this. But, um, I'd also like to acknowledge, uh, the efforts that have been put forward by the League of Women Voters with, uh, and I know several of my colleagues have, have, um, benefited by their, their moving forward with providing us that we were able to take out into the communities, uh, these gun locks that we were able to get into these households. And I know that, um, I probably have done close to a thousand of them that I, that I got, and I know my colleagues have, have done that as well. But along with that, it's not just giving the gun lock, it's a little bit of conversation and education about why it's so important to use these gun locks and to be safe, and it's not saying you shouldn't have a, it's not taking that stance of you should have a gun, you shouldn't have a gun, that's not where we're going with that at all. It's the safety part of it, um, and the innocence that we're trying to, to protect. So, again, thank you, uh, Ms. Kennedy, and again, thank you to the League of Women Voters. Now that we're all back out and doing and seeing and being around people, we need to ramp that up again. I know my colleagues will join, join in, uh, to, to go out into communities. We go to HOAs, we go to school meetings, we go anywhere we can to provide these gun locks, um, to these folks, and, and it has, they've accepted them, um, very openly and very grateful to be able to have them. So, it's really a good thing, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we have the greatest state representative in the world with us tonight. Went to Tallahassee, and she took it by storm, and we're very happy about that, 'cause you helped Pembroke Pines a great deal. So Representative Bartman, would you give us your legislative report, please?
Yes, I will. Push to speak, okay. First of all, I'm very happy to be in this amazing city with this amazing commission. I cannot say enough about each and every one of you, and thank you for the touching Memorial Day ceremony. Uh, it was really important to commemorate that day, and it was incredibly, incredibly moving, especially with the bust and every, for Xavier, and it was, it was just very, very special. I only have a little bit of time, so I'm gonna, very quickly, uh, because I wanna go over a couple of things as it pertains to session. First, uh, the really, really good news, uh, we did not get vetoed. We are going to be installing internal stormwater pumps, uh, west, on the west Pembroke Pines, in the ever, right near the Everglades to deal with the seepage issue. So everyone knows that after Tropical Storm Etta, there was a huge issue in pines, and it had, and we realized that there was just a drainage issue, so I have two drainage projects. One, uh, yours, which is the- One, yours, which is the seepage pump. The second one is in Southwest Ranches, which were all interconnected because we all drain into the C-11 Canal. And the third one, which is really important, is we have two, uh, mobile stormwater pumps for the South Broward Drainage District. So now when you have flooded streets and you know there are seniors that have to get out in their emergencies, those pumps can be moved to those locations to pump the water. So I'm very excited about that.
Me too.
Uh, I am so, I know especially Iris and Angelo, whose residents live right there. Um, so our budget this year was $101.5 billion budget. It was the largest budget in Florida's history. Um, we did, uh, there was an allocation for first responders to get $1,000 each and teachers, so that's really exciting. I'm glad that that happened. Um, as it pertains to education, there was a $3 billion increase, but it did expand voucher programs, which will, that money now is coming out of the Florida Education Finance Program, which will impact our charter schools and our public schools. So it's something that we need to watch, because we have outstanding charter schools and public schools here in Pembroke Pines. Uh, the really good news, uh, for those of you who have children in college, uh, they did not, uh, change bright futures. As a, my daughter's a freshman at UF, and I was very concerned that she was going to have to change her major to keep her bright futures. So we were able to ward off that change, but there will no longer be a book supplement. Uh, so for all the parents who wrote in, I want to thank them very much. Um, as it pertains to my bills, um, the first bill I, uh, I filed actually was absorbed into the Speaker's Flood Package, which is really exciting. So it's part of the statewide flooding and sea level rise resilience. And so it's very important, we live out west here, and people talk about coastal flooding, but not inland flooding, which impacts residents of Pembroke Pines. So it was really exciting, because he called me into his office and said, "I, Representative Bartman, I really like your bill, and we're going to absorb that." And I'm like, "Okay." Like, I didn't know what that meant. I was like, "Okay, that's great." And he did, and so it got moved into another bill package, and so I was really excited about that, because, I mean, that's the sustainability of our state, and I was part of that, so it's great. Bill 899, which impacts your teachers and your schools. Now, that bill was interesting, because I wanted to start the conversation that FSA testing should not be counted this year, it shouldn't be counted for teacher salaries, it shouldn't be counted for retention, that was important to all of us. We have A-rated schools here. And, uh, it started the conversation at the first press conference. I said, "Look, we don't need to pass this bill. You can do an executive order at any time." And it started moving in the Senate, and an executive order with issues that included the language from my bill, so I was very excited. Um, I also passed Serena's Law, which we're waiting to go, which is waiting to go to the governor's desk, which closes a loophole. Uh, this is really important for people out there who, uh, have organizations that deal with children. Yeah, Serena was a young girl who was molested at a young age, she reported it much later, so she didn't file criminal charges. Uh, but she did get a permanent lifetime injunction against the gentleman who did this, and years later, she saw him volunteering or working at a youth program. And the loophole is, is that the clerk of courts, if the, if the victim is a minor, they will not show that record. They just, like, expunge the whole record. So now that record will be produced without the child's name, and she had two other injunctions against him. So for people who think they're doing a Level 2 background check, they need to go a little further and look to see if there are any injunctions filed against that individual. Uh, so it was just, I didn't even know that occurred until I met Serena, so I was really glad that could happen. I want to speak a minute about your mayor, Frank Ortes, who is the Home Rule Hero. He was just awarded that.
Thank you, thank you.
And that's amazing, and there were a lot of preemptions. I cannot say enough about your city manager and your attorney. Um, I was, I would call them all hours of the day, I'd call them right before committee. It was really important to me that anything I voted on, even on committee, did not negatively impact my municipalities. So I was able to change some things, it was really important, but really quick, and I want to go over the bills that are important for you to know about. Uh, you have House Bill 421, which passed, which I voted against, uh, which is relief from burdens on real property rights, uh, changes Burt Harris, and that's going to impact you as a municipality. Uh, impact fees have changed, which also will impact your city. Uh, also, uh, this is interesting, you can use drones now. So if you want to make a capital investment in drones for traffic accidents or look around, you can do that. This is one of the ones that I hope you have strong ordinances already in place for, House Bill 403, which is home-based businesses. So now someone can operate a business out of their home, it's very loosey-goosey, and, you know, we like to maintain our property values, and that could become a real issue as it pertains to parking and people coming in and out and signage and things like that. Uh, there was another preemption for local regulation of energy infrastructure, which was a real problem, that also impacts you. Um, and, uh, preemption of restriction over utility services, and a preemption over emergency management powers of political subdivisions. And since we were just talking about gun violence, there was another bill to preempt you from regulating any sort of restrictions on guns. So a lot of home rule was taken away this session, I fought against it. Uh, one bill I was very concerned about, as is your city, is whether or not you could anonymously complain if there was a code violation. Uh, in committee, uh, the sponsor of the bill, we worked with him, he amended the bill. So those anonymous reporting, reports could still happen. When the bill went to the Senate, so I voted, I voted against it in committee, voted for it when he amended it, voted, and then it went to the Senate, and the Senate took out the anonymity. So I voted against it. So that's, that's a real problem, because we want people to be afraid to call in, especially when there are code violations. So that is a very quick legislative update, because I wanted to save time for this, Mayor. So, um, this is my first time doing a tribute, and I wasn't really sure how it worked, but I thought this, you were the best place to give my first tribute as a state representative. And Representative Marie Woodson would be here tonight, uh, it's her birthday, so I'm presenting as well for her. But this is, I don't know, if Feeding South Florida is here yet? They're not, so, okay. So the one thing I can say about this city is that you were one of the first feeding sites to open up during COVID. And every day, you all were out there, every week, along with your city staff, loading trucks with food, people who had nowhere else to go, who needed to feed their children. And you did it with a smile on your face. I've seen every, each and every one of you participating in that, and your staff every single week. And you were a lifeline to this community and people who didn't have food and had food insecurity. So I couldn't think of a better way to, uh, use my tribute than for the city of Pembroke Pines and Feeding South Florida. Whereas Feeding South Florida is the state's largest food bank, serving Palm Beach, Broward, Miami-Dade, and Monroe Counties. And whereas demand for hunger relief has more than doubled in the state since the onset of the COVID pandemic. And whereas recent survey data from the U.S. Census Bureau shows hunger surging of more than 541,000 adults and 329, 423 children from Homestead to Palm Beach report food insecurity. And whereas since March of 2020, a coalition of more than 800 staff members and volunteers of Feeding South Florida and employees of the cities of Pembroke Pines have worked daily to distribute fresh fruits, vegetables, and protein to 40,000 households per week in the city. And whereas many of the workers routinely start their jobs at 4:00 a.m. to begin packing food for the residents who need nutrition. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines, in collaboration with Feeding South Florida, has successfully served more than 1,789, 400,000 meals to families in the city of Pembroke Pines during the COVID pandemic. And whereas more than 1,000 meals are delivered weekly to some of our most vulnerable elderly residents in Century Village alone. And whereas Congresswoman Debbie Wasserman Schultz, Pembroke Pines Mayor Frank C. Ortes, Vice Mayor J.D. Schwartz, Commissioner Thomas Good Jr., Commissioner Angelo Castillo, Commissioner Iris A. Seifel, City Manager Charles F. Dodge, Pembroke Pines Police Department, Feeding South Florida CEO Paco Velez, I had to add Jay Schechter, because he got that line moving every week, and Christina Sorensen, and all of the devoted, uh, staff mobilized for this effort. They respectfully complained that the, proclaimed that the employees of the city of Pembroke Pines and the staff and volunteers of Feeding South Florida are congratulated and appreciated for their tireless dedication in ensuring that our most vulnerable residents do not live with hunger. So I'm going to pass this to all of your employees. Uh, I failed to mention that not only did you have the drive-through line, but it was a week-long effort, because over at the senior center, you were packing bags, and you would take a bus over to the senior communities, Hollybrook and Century Village, and pass out meals door to door. I, this speaks volumes of this city, the employees of this city, and how you take care of your citizens. So on behalf of everyone, thank you so much, and it was an honor to participate, and thank you all very much.
Thank you, Representative. Maybe next year, we can come up and lobby in person.
Absolutely, I would love for you to come up. Okay, and I'm going to give you-
Any questions?
Any questions for me?
Not a question, but, um, I, thank you.
Ms. Seifel, you have something to say?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Representative Rob. You know, um, you hear about how people just fit into a position, fit into a job. Guess what? You fit into the position, and you fit into the job, and we are very, very lucky that the people got, got it right and sent you to Tallahassee.
Thank you.
And we look forward to many, many more of what you do for us. We are very, very appreciative of it, we really are.
Thank you. And I'm so happy to represent each and every one of you.
Thank you. And Mayor, one, if I could, one thing that, um, is really kind of near and dear to me that, that Representative Rob forward was the change in the Level 2 background checks, which is a very serious issue. And, you know, that was an item that I had pushed with support of my colleagues here at the city. So Mayor, I would ask that we would direct or, or encourage our city manager and to the attorney to look at that particular law and see what we need to do perhaps in our city to, to make any kind of changes to keep that as strengthened as, as possible. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and thank you, Representative Bartman. I, I do want to congratulate you on all of your efforts during legislative sessions, but I did want to point out that there was a very important role that you played prior to being in session. Uh, we all remember the DOT and the process with what we call the C-Slip, and they were passing on a very heavy charge to the cities for some of these projects, and, and I know that Representative Bartman and I had a very healthy conversation. I know that she specifically went and talked to the district secretary, Jerry O'Reilly, and, uh, through that process, she was able to move that dial. And, uh, the DOT and, in collaboration with the NPO, mayor of which you are the chair of the NPO, uh, were able to, uh, change that. And, um, state now will reimburse the city full cost for any projects going forward, and, uh, that was a huge effort, and thank you for that as well.
Thank you.
For the things you do off-line.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you for bringing that to my attention. You were a huge advocate on that.
Representative Bartman, um, over a year ago, uh, you set out on a journey to make a difference. Uh, it was a tidal wave of difference. And, and I say that because, you know, echoing Commissioner Seifel's comment, certain people are meant for certain things, but only certain people can do great things.
Thank you.
And, um, there, there is something about your ability to work with both sides of the aisle, putting, um, putting your life experience out in public.
Thank you.
Um, and just doing the right thing for the right reason. And if there's, and, and I, and I don't say this in a cavalier way, if, if there is a way of getting a public servant, um, to remove all the politics and doing the right thing, Representative Robin Bartman is the essence of what we need more of in Tallahassee.
Thank you.
Um, you know, we have, uh, you know, we've shared, uh, over the years, um, personal moments together, but what strikes me is I got involved to protect kids, and, and now you're making, you're making things even better in Tallahassee than what they were? Fantastic. Um, the, and I appreciate the, the funding, uh, it's never easy, uh, to get a governor not to veto something. Um, but the one thing that I would tell you that all 400-plus cities are dealing with, that Tallahassee still hasn't gotten it right, and now with this new home-based business nonsense, is the Airbnb. Uh, I brought forward an item, I, I guess it was just about, just about eight, nine months ago, um, for us to be able to do something with it, but we were waiting to see what Tallahassee was going to do, and it was taking some really scary turns. Um, every one of us up here get the call or an email on a daily basis about, uh, people not conducting themselves in a, um, neighborly-like way. Uh, so something, this needs to be a, a priority, um, for the, for the, for the, for the delegation to, to really do something, and maybe it's a local bill. Because I don't see, I don't see it getting done in Tallahassee. I think maybe the Airbnb, uh, should be handled at the local level. I know our, uh, the Realtor Board would be very interested in sitting down and coming up with some common sense, um, approaches to, to, um, to addressing this issue, but we, we can't, we can't continue the path that we're on. So I look forward to working with you. Uh, please enjoy your summer, you've been working your tail off.
Oh, no, no, I'm meeting with each of you, I was just going to say after this-
I know you're not stopping, but, yeah.
I want to get your priorities, because now that I understand the process, we're going to sit with policy staff, so I want your bill ideas. If you want a local bill, we need to start working on it this summer, and I want to start working on appropriations to get ahead. We have a whole new strategy for next year, so the Airbnb, if it's going to be a local bill, then we need to start working on that. So, and, and I need to hear your bill ideas, so.
And we, uh, we had a local bill on Airbnb.
So let's do it.
We went all the way to the top, thought we had it passed, and it failed. So we need to work on it.
Okay, we will.
Thanks again.
Thank you, and-
Mayor, anybody else? Yes, Ms. Casiel?
Thank you very much. It took one phone call to you, Robin, to tell you that the residents of Century Village and of other senior communities in Pembroke Pines need a vaccination at a time when vaccinations were gold. Today, you can go to Publix, or you can go to Walmart, or Walgreen, or whatever, and get your, and get your shot. Uh, and we encourage people to continue doing that. I saw a report recently that, um, almost 50%, a little over 50% of all Americans have at least one dose, and, uh, high 40s by the end, end of next week will have had two or be fully vaccinated, and that's, and that's important. But when very, very few of anyone had, uh, had a vaccine and were crying out, "How do I get my vaccine for protection?", particularly the seniors, uh, it only took one phone call, and you amazingly went to work and got that health department to come to our communities and to do it in, it, it's not just that they came, that was miracle enough, it's the way that they did it. Um, I'm sometimes a critic of the health department. They did an amazing job administering that program. They were very, very, uh, good about working with others, and, and they did a great job. But that wasn't the only tragedy you dealt with. You also dealt with, uh, Ida. And when that hurricane, and when that storm hit us and flooded out West, West Pembroke Pines, you didn't just sit there and lament and make comments, you met with the people at the district, you went and met with the people at the, at the South Broward Drainage District, you were present. And you, uh, and you were able to communicate with people in Tallahassee and make things that are political, not about politics, but about, but about serving, uh, other folks. It, it really is incredibly refreshing to see the way you hit the ground running, uh, in this job in a short period of time. It really is remarkable. I, I, I don't think I've seen the like of it in, ever. And so I want to thank you for it, and, uh, it's, uh, it's absolutely fantastic, and I'm, I'm really, really looking forward to what the future will bring.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you again.
I love you guys, thank you. I'm going to give you to the city clerk. Also, for the residents, if you have unemployment issues, uh, business fraud, unemployment issues, uh, I'm dealing with teacher certifications recently, which is interesting, uh, call my office or call me at 954-668-3662, or robin.bartman@myfloridahouse.gov. Thank you, guys, I love this commission, I love this city. Thank you, guys, it's an honor to represent you. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on. Uh, let's, I first wish, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor in Pattygood, happy 31-year anniversary.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
What was that? I can't see. Was it her?
No, but I want to speak to her.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I very much appreciate that. Uh, I do want to profess my love to my wife and the public eye. Uh, honey, thank you very much, even though it's 31 years married, it's been 36 years anniversary, so I do appreciate you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I also wanted to bring up another item, if I may, real briefly. Uh, you know, we had the, uh, the event, uh, out at the, um, Fletcher, um, Center for the Memorial Day, uh, ceremonies. And during that, um, activity, we, we had a special presentation by a fellow, um, Mr., an artist, Cliff Leonard, and it was to the family of Lance Corporal Patrick Xavier. Um, and he presented the bust statue in bronze for Lance Corporal Xavier. And it's over here to our right, um, what, what was presented. Uh, it was very interesting in having conversation with the family after the ceremonies, and they expressed a lot of gratitude to, uh- And it's over here to our right, what was presented. It was very interesting in having conversation with the family after the ceremonies. And they expressed a lot of gratitude to, to Mr. Leonard, but also to the city for our support for that family. It started with Commissioner Siple, who, who worked very diligently to, to get a street name after Mr. Xavier out on, in the West Side a little bit. And they, they were very thankful for that. And they wanted to return that honor and allow this city to have the opportunity to show the works that was done by Mr. Leonard and to show the appreciation of the family and the love of what our love of their son was, who is a military veteran who died in action. So they asked if we would mind displaying it at City Hall for, for a little bit of time. And you know, I've got, I have got the contact information. I don't know how long the City Commission would like to, but they were willing to allow the city whatever length of time that we would want to present it. I think it would have been a great idea if we.
Mr. Dodge, you got the direction?
Yes, we will.
We will certainly find the appropriate location.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
So I, I just want to say then on behalf, I know that Elizabeth Barlet, the mother, was very, very anxious to be here tonight. But she's a hero in and of herself. She's, she's a healthcare worker and she got tied up with those services tonight. And her fa, his father, Patrick, and his brother, Dee Dee, were all very, very thankful. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we've done a lot of them. And it's so refreshing to get there and see all the people that showed up, no masks, and the speakers we had. It was terrific. All right, announcing of items to be posted on the agenda, Deputy Clerk.
No items, Mayor.
How about items at the request of the public?
No items at the request of the public.
Announcing on board and committee appointments.
No announcements.
May I? Hold on. Last night, I joined in to the Economic Development Board. And they had a problem getting people to attend. And I was listening, and we need to, whether we need to make new appointments or whatever, but they didn't have six people on the call. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. Monsieur Castillo, you had something?
Yes, two things. There's an ordinance on that in terms of unexcused absences. And maybe we should review that if the clerk could put out.
What?
An attendance, um, report to the commission. Each, each of the appointing officials can, can deal with that. I'd like to announce that in my individual capacity as a City Commissioner, I've created a Citizens Budget Council. And this is a council that is going to be providing me, though I may bring their findings and recommendations through the City Commission on, via Commission Idol, their thoughts on spending in the city and budgets. It was important for me in creating this that, that it have a citywide perspective. And so I'd like to announce the, the initial members. And I want to let the public know that I'm continuing to accept applications for this. I firmly believe that I want to hear anything that you have to say about the city's spending of your tax dollars. So Rafael Barrero is a Vice President of Government Solutions at Synovus Bank with over 20 years in finance and banking. He lives in Quincy Park in District One. I am also awaiting another application from that area, which I have not received, but I may announce that appointment at the next meeting. In District Two, Rigoberto, Rick Garcia is a real estate broker. He lives in Pembroke Lakes. And I want to thank him for applying. He has a background in finance, as does Leonardo Navas. He is degreed in accounting and he's a bookkeeping manager for a local firm. And he also lives in Pembroke Lakes. In District Three, I have Vincent Rodriguez, who lives in Towngate. He is a mortgage broker and a finance expert, helps people every day get mortgages. And I want to thank him. Doris Gonzalez lives in Pembroke Falls, and she's degreed in business management. She's a strategic field account manager and industry specialist in insurance. Thank you, Doris, for applying. Scott Barnett lives in Estancia. He's an executive producer, producer of his own graphics and video production company, as is Jeff Green, who lives in Chapel Trail. He holds a degree in economics and finance, as I do. And he's a founder and CEO of his own firm. These, these individuals will begin serving as members of the Citizens Budget Council. And we will have our first meeting in August. And I want to thank them for their contributions. And I look very, very forward to hearing more about that. Tomorrow evening, there's going to be a presentation here at City Hall. I believe it's at 6:30, Mr. Dodge?
Yes, it is.
And it's going to be about the budget. It's going to be held in the, in the great room. I think it's a great initiative on the part of this commission to get additional input from, from residents. And I want to thank you for putting that together and also encourage all residents who have an interest in their own money being spent here in City Hall to show up and listen to the presentations. And if you'd like to participate in the committee, please contact me by email and we can figure that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor.
We also want to say happy 52nd anniversary to Commissioner Siple. Mr. Siple, moving on. What did you have?
Happy anniversary.
Mayor, I was just going to say, I didn't want to rain on, on Vice Mayor and Patty's day, which is today, actually, correct?
Correct.
But Mark and I, June 10th, so we won't meet again until then. So I was, I was going to say happy anniversary to my hubby, Mark, who's at home watching us. Little bit more, you're 31, we're just 52 at this point. So, um, um.
You were 12 when you met him, right?
Well, sort of. But it's, you know, but it's all good. It's all good. And honey, I'll see you later on.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we have consent agenda items one through 12. What is your pleasure?
I'll have two and 10, please.
What is it?
Two and 10.
Two. Castillo.
Nine, please, Mayor.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. 10. Nine, Commissioner?
Yes, Mayor.
All right. Anybody else? All right, if not, let's pass one, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 11, and 11. So moved. Moved by Commissioner Castillo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Siple. Discussion here in our own favor, I?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a discussion real quick on that.
On what, the consent agenda?
Yeah, on 11. I'm not disagreeing with it. I just, I just want to make certain that I can participate virtually on September 13th for the budget.
As long as we have a quorum.
Why not?
Mr. Mayor, for the record, the answer is yes, Commissioner. Mr. Vice Mayor, certainly, so long as there's a physical quorum on the, on the dais. There's no, no legal bar or pre, preclusion from doing so.
Okay. All right. All right, let's go to item two, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to direct a city official to sign seven-year state highway lighting maintenance and compensation agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation.
Okay, is there a second?
You can also try spelling it.
Second.
Sorry, please turn down your phone, whoever that.
I don't know how that happens.
Second, go ahead, the Vice Mayor's second. Discussion, go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dodge, I had some email with you and I wanted to make sure because our friends at the state do a lot of things, but they're asking us here to continue the practice of fixing, I suppose that means changing the bulbs, on many of their streetlights, their streetlights that they ask us to fix. And I know that we have a contract with, with a firm that does, among other things, provide that service. I want to make sure that when we do something for someone else, they pay us. And that we don't get involved in deficits, especially, and this is a very important thing. We're talking about streetlights, that's public safety. In many cases, if we don't have the lights, people, people can be injured. I'm all for, I'm all for doing the work. I just want to make sure that we have all of the funding that's necessary in order for us to help them with their issue, because those poles belong to them. So is the funding sufficient such that we don't get involved in a deficit?
Mr. Dodge?
Mayor and Commissioner, as I stated to you in the memo, Commissioner, yes, it is.
Okay, nope. That's a good answer. Thank you.
Want everybody to know, we have 70 lights that we run and operate. And a lot of people will call me and say, that streetlight's out. Call, you know, Florida Power and Light, called it. And it's owned by us and we take care of that. And then the ones on the Pembroke Pines Boulevard, the street, the high hat, the streetlight, owned by the state. So when they go out, you have to get them to replace them. Okay, further discussion. All those in favor of item two, say aye.
All right.
I'm sorry. Call or roll, City Clerk.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Commissioner Siple, item nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve the minutes of the Wednesday, May 19th, 2021 regular commission meeting.
Is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Castillo. Go ahead, Commissioner Siple.
Thank you, Mayor. On, on page, page one, under the pledge of allegiance, there's the acknowledgements portion. And I just wanted to correct the spelling if I could. Kathy's Closet, it's Kathy with a K and Closet with a K, because that is their company name. So I wanted to make sure that that was correct in the records.
All right, we'll do it.
And also the next, the third paragraph down, which was unfortunately our issue with losing a Mr., a young man, Alfonso Amengual. The, the father's name is correct, Rodrigo, but the mother's name is Mercedes, not Maria Amengual. So I would like for that also to be corrected for the, for the record, Mayor.
We'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Item 10, Commissioner Castillo.
I think we have to vote on nine.
Mr. Mayor, if you can vote on item number nine, as amended and suggested by the Commissioner.
All right, go ahead, Deputy Clerk, call or roll.
Second, ma'am.
Commissioner Siple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor Otis?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item 10, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you. This is a motion to approve the school resource officer, SRO, summer school agreement between the City of Pembroke Pines and the School Board of Broward County for the 2021 to 2022 school year.
A second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Siple. Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Thank you very, very much. I want to return to the theme that I previously introduced. When we do something for someone else, I'm happy to do it, but we need to be paid. We need to be paid. And we do some very important health, health and safety-related things for other units of government, other taxing authorities, and they pay us in full. And that's the right way to do it. With the School Board of Broward County, not so much. Mr. Dodge, do you have a presentation that you can offer us on the historical, let's say the 10 years of, of funding and expense that the city has had with SROs?
Deborah, could you put up the schedule that was requested? If you could enlarge that.
Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna have to do better than that. There's a little slide on the bottom, I see. There it is. The other way. There it is. Too big. Too big. That's good enough. Too big.
I tell you, it's good to read. Go ahead. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Basically, we were asked to go back 10 years and provide the agreements that we've had each year for the SRO programs, what we were reimbursed per officer, and what was the amount of the total city subsidy. And you'll see that beginning in 2012, 13. It's broken in two sections. One is the school year, and that summer, the $52,000 was for a summer program similar to what we had, that what we're looking to approve for this year. But as you can see, we increased it over time. Prior to that, we had probably only 11 SROs. And in 2012, 13, we increased it to 16. So we do have an SRO representative at each one of our traditional public schools in Pembroke Pines.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dodge. So you'll notice under cost per officer, that in 2012, our cost per officer was slightly over $59,000 a year. And currently, it is 79 and change. That is, that is a result of collective bargaining in our city. We're proud of, of our police force and of the way that we pay them. And this is a schedule that I am told is very advantageous compared to certain other cities. We're talking here not, not necessarily about first, you know, full-time police officers. These are SROs. And they don't work as many hours or throughout the whole year as, as regular police staff. And this is what they are paid. Most of them are retired. That is the model that we adopted. And it, it has been a cost saver for the city and it has, it has worked very well. The reimbursement per officer, the next column, is the amount that the School Board of Broward County has paid us in relative to our cost. You'll see that in the first column, it's $59,000. That year, they only gave us 46 instead of $59,000 per person. And all the way down the line. This year, we're, we're getting $60,000, which is more than we've ever gotten before, but our costs are $79,000. That means that we've had to subsidize a, 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 a number that goes sort of up and down. But this year, we're subsidizing more of this duty, which is undeniably, under law, 100% the responsibility of the Broward County School Board. Over the last 10 years, we have, we have subsidized this responsibility by $2.6 million. That's a lot of police officers that we could have used. This is all taxpayer money of the City of Pembroke Pines. Not a, not a cent of that $2.6 million comes out of your school board taxes. All that comes from the, the taxes that, that Pembroke Pines collects. And that represents an enormous number that our police chief could have used to put additional boots on the ground to keep our city safe, a thing the school board won't fund. They fund protection for their buildings, their buildings, not, not, not on the streets. In fact, right now, we're running at a 25% deficit to cost. 25% deficit to cost. Now, school board is in the midst of hiring a new superintendent, a new general counsel. There are several new school board members. And we've made, we've made some progress. I want to thank Mayor Otis, who took the signal from us, I don't know, Mayor, how many years it was, ago it was, and started getting the school board to begin paying. They used to pay us nothing. We used to, we used to provide SRO services with no reimbursement. And we said, we can't continue to do it anymore. So we made some progress. And I was thankful to be a force, a, let's call it, behind, behind that, that impetus. 25% off budget is simply unacceptable. They need to pay us our cost. There are other school boards in the state of Florida that run their own police departments. They police their own buildings. It's in the statute. They're allowed to do it. It's common. It's, it's Broward that is uncommonly not running their own police department that patrols all of their own schools. And I think it's an important thing. Our folks do it well. And I don't want to be held hostage by, oh, you've got to protect the children. I, I'm all for our police being in schools. I simply want to get paid. We should not have to burden the taxpayers of Pembroke Pines with this additional cost. They already pay school tax. They already pay bond. We were promised all kinds of things in the bond issue. So I hope that we can agree to send them a resolution so that it's there when the new superintendent gets on board to know, we are not happy. We want to be fully paid so that we can use taxpayer dollars to do things in Pembroke Pines. No different than they use all of their school board money. no different than they use all of their School Board money for School Board things. Secondly, we play a significant role at the Broward League of Cities. This is an issue that affects every city in Broward. What is the Broward League of Cities doing on this issue? Why can't we coalesce as a force to go to the School Board and, and ask for financial justice when it comes to the SRO program? It's very, very simple. We're willing to do the work, it's important work, we want to do the work. If they want to do it themselves, that's their choice, but if they, if, if they want us to do it, they need to pay the bill. So I, I brought this issue up expecting to vote in favor of this, because they, we need, we need to have the SROs, but going on a fo- on a, on a forward-going basis, I want to know what this Commission is prepared to do to make sure that we collect a hundred percent. And I'm there with you in order to make that happen, but we should be collecting one hundred percent, not seventy-five percent of our bill. Thank you.
Mr. Dodge? Any response?
No, I, I don't have any response.
Okay. Let me just re- uh, go along with what Commissioner Castillo was saying. Years ago, Jennifer Gottlieb was a School Board member. We went to her, and she ended up going back to the School Board and reimbursing, uh, the City of Pembroke Pines in, in the nominations up to four years to come to at least a fifty percent payment of School Board members. And then our good friend Patty Good in the School Board gave us three School Board members last year or the year before, so we appreciate that. But I, I hear it, and let's do it.
Mayor, if I could weigh in, please?
Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
Um, thi- this issue, for me, um, has been, um, well, for all of us, I would have to say, for all of us, um, the Night of Sandy Hook was a game changer for the country, but we took action and we funded. If you look at this, if you look at this, um, board here, see two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, we funded it. Um, I thought it was three sixty-eight, I don't know why it's, it's two, two-ten, but it was three hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that came out of the budget that year that we had already passed, and we said, we want to make sure that we have our own police officers protecting every school. This was years before MSD. And I do hope that there's, um, that there's newfound focus with new leadership down at the School Board and a new superintendent to be named later. Um, this city led Broward. But the notion that the School Board should have its own police department, I don't need a committee and so, and ask select few, uh, select number of folks throughout the city if they want a School Board force to protect our kids. They're going to say they want Pembroke Pines cops. And that comes with a cost. Just like, um, if you were to ask our residents if they want to have green uniforms protecting the city or the blue ones that we have, it would be the blue ones that we have. Because we're Pembroke Pines and we're different. And sometimes it costs a little bit more. That being said, Pembroke Pines has been a donor city. Our tax base, let's be honest, we have, um, we have a lot of money going into the School Board. Um, we're not getting the same amount back. Um, Mayor, your, uh, your leadership on this issue, and, and City Manager Dodge, um, and the legislative effort from, from our lobbyists up in Tallahassee, um, it goes back to a local bill. Um, we don't have the Broward County delegation on the same page as us. And to be quite frankly with you, Commissioner Castillo, we've had these discussions at the, uh, Broward League of Cities. Um, Commissioner Cyper and I attend them, we, we, we've had these discussions of what needs to happen. Um, at this point, the state of Florida, um, is not quite on the same wavelength as what we need when it comes to protecting our kids. Um, there are private security firms bidding for security all over the, all over the state. At the end of the day, um, we don't just have retired people doing SRO, our, SRO work. Because since MSD, we have a lot of SROs who no longer want to take the risk of, um, of working as a retired law enforcement officer with the same amount of risk. So if you spend any time with our, uh, HR director, he will tell you that there is a shift in the way that SROs, uh, want to, um, move forward. And yes, we do have collective bargaining, but that doesn't change the fact that the position has changed. It's a complicated issue.
All right.
I see, I'm, I'm going to wrap this up, Mayor. I see two point six million dollars, but I see the city has spent nearly that much in this Southwest Ranches, putting kids in cages, private prison crap. We've spent that much money already. So let's be honest. If we're going to be honest with the taxpayer, we need to be honest with all the money being spent. I'd rather protect kids than having lawsuits. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Cyper, quickly, then we're going to take a call, uh, take your vote.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I have a couple of questions, I guess, for City Manager.
City Manager?
Uh, I mean, I'm going to support this tonight, but I just, uh, a few questions kind of came to mind, um, with the, with the, I know with always the discussion that we've had in, through the, through the years with how many officers would be at each school.
Hmm.
So where are we with what we do with the City of Pembroke Pines? And what is the School Board's criteria for how many officers they place at? I know elementary's different, middle's different, high school's different, and I would assume the size of the schools would also be, uh, you know, played into that. So where, where are we, City Manager, with, um, how, how do we play in that part of it?
City Manager?
Um, the, the traditional schools all have, as well as our charter schools, all have a School Resource Officer at each elementary and each middle. Uh, I'm not familiar with Broward schools, if they have a very large middle school, if they have two, but we do provide two Resource Officers for all of our high schools, both the, uh, West Broward and, and Flanagan, as well as our Charter High School.
And, and I, and I remember some discussion, and I, and I don't remember, it was earlier on, I don't remember the year exactly, but there was a lot of, um, un- unrest with parents uh, at elementary, and I believe even in middle, where those, um, uh, schools were sharing an officer, where an officer would be part-time, you know, maybe in the morning at one school, and then in the afternoon, go, you know, go and cover the other school. And I, I, I believe that I remember very correctly that we had kind of an uprising with our parents that said, that's not acceptable, uh, and we need to do, we need to do better than that. We need an officer there that, you know, God forbid something should happen, that they don't have to be coming from another school to, to, to get there. We don't feel like our children are being, um, covered safely that way. And, and I think, I think we, we up here heard that loud and clear from them, and, and we struck, we, you know, we made sure that we had at least one, and like you said, now we have two at, at our, uh, at, at the high schools that are in, in, in the area. But what is, is there a specific, can you provide to, to us? Does the, does the School Board have a specific criteria on how many officers they are going to assign to a school? I, I, I'm curious to know that, because I've never been able to find that in any research that, that I've done. Um, and, and I want to make it sure to, clear to everybody too, that, that when we say SROs, we talk about every single school that's in the City of Pembroke Pine, not, not just our charter.
City Manager, you got an answer?
Yes, uh, Broward Schools, a number of years, uh, has provided the funding to us to maintain an SRO full-time in each one of the elementary schools. Uh, it was a number of years ago where, uh, SROs were shared among elementary schools as well as middle schools. But at, in the present time in our city, uh, we do have an SRO in every school.
All right, further discussion, yes.
Right, so are these, are, are we, well, first off, uh, um, I, I would have liked to have been able to, I, I didn't see that this chart, uh, when this chart was made, and, and I would have liked to have seen it a little bit ahead of time, so next time, maybe we can get that out a little bit bef- before we have our meeting. But, um, are we, uh, with these numbers, are we, are we really, are we comparing apples and apples in that, in that we, we are providing at least what Broward County criteria is? And based upon what our parents have, have come here and told us many times, whether here or, or in person or at events, that, that they want their kids protected, and that's all schools, that's all of our schools. So, um, I, I, if you could get more, a little more information, I, I'm going to support this tonight, obviously.
Well, we do, we do provide them in all schools, so.
Yeah, I know.
The answer would be, yes, all of the schools in Pembroke Pines are provided with an SRO.
But my question is, are we, is there a criteria that the School Board has on how they determine how many they're going to place at each school? I'd like to know what that, what that is. There has to be something backing to how many they're going to put there.
All right.
I'll make, I'll make that, I'll make that inquiry.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Hold on.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have an opportunity to speak.
Hold on. I heard Commissioner Castillo quickly, and then we're going to go to Vice Mayor, we'll move on. Go ahead, Mr. Castillo.
Well, I, you know, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't want, I didn't want to cut off the Vice Mayor, I, I, I just.
No, no, no. Mr. Castillo, do you have a comment, go ahead.
I had a motion to make, but I wanted to make it after all of my colleagues spoke.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, I, 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 I will say, uh, right off the bat, I'm, I, I won't support anything that's adversarial to another agency that's struggling, no different than us. Um, you know, we speak regularly about it takes a village to raise a child. This ain't, this ain't that. You know, the questions that were raised, we don't have the luxury of having the folks before us answering the questions. So unless we go through some process where we at least have the School Board experts stand before us and tell us there are, there have been changes. They have new models, there's, you know, I mean, the, you know, the risk here is that they go and say, fine, we'll just put guardians in, I mean, then we're going to be upset about that too, right? But we don't want to do that. And maybe, and, 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 and like the mayor said, you know, in years past, we've collaboratively, we're able to move the dial.
Right.
Let's do it again, let's find out what they need. I mean, if it's state funding, that, that's where the issue is, then let's collectively, as a county, as a School Board district, go to the, go and ask for more funding. I mean, because otherwise, it's either tax you here or tax you there. I mean, we have to figure this out. I got it, I understand, um, Commissioner Castillo's concern, I, I got it. But I think that we should do this first, to see if we can do it collaboratively before we go and send a resolution that, that, that basically demands without having conversation.
And Vice Mayor, if I may, that.
Commissioner Castillo, you want to have a motion?
Uh, well, before his motion, I just wanted to say that, to Vice Mayor, that that's exactly why I was asking about what's criteria, because I want to be able to understand what they do and how do we work together on making this happen.
Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate, and I appreciate the Vice Mayor's, uh, comments. Vice Mayor is relatively new here. And, uh, I've been, uh, dealing with this issue for, uh, close to eighteen years now. And, um, while I consider, well, every agency that we do business with to be part of a village, some people like to eat alone.
You have a motion, Commissioner?
So what I would like to do is precisely what he suggests, which is gr- create a interactive dialogue here or there. And I think it starts with this chart. And a letter that, um, the City Manager should send on our behalf, um, uh, to whoever the interim is, and, uh, and, and to every School Board member personally as well, saying, listen, we are very proud of the service that we provide to your schools. But you guys have to pay your bills. And we need to sit down and figure out a way to get that done.
All right, let's.
And maybe, and maybe they have an idea, I mean, you know, maybe they have an idea of how to do it, maybe they want to engage in a dialogue of how to do it. But these deficits need to end, we need to, we need to be able to pay our bills without, without structuring, uh, 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 creating a situation where people in Pembroke Pines or any city are frankly, uh, paying to do someone else's job.
There's a second to the motion?
Mayor, before you ask for the, before you ask for the second.
Sorry?
No, it's just, it's just a consensus question.
Folks, what's that?
I'd like to ask the manager a question, uh, before, before.
On this motion?
Uh, before you ask for the second.
No, no, no. On this motion?
I didn't make a motion.
We didn't make a motion.
I thought you made a motion to, but.
All right, let's go right back.
There's no motion on the record, please, Mayor.
Hi, and there is a motion. I just. Commissioner Castillo, you said you wanted to make a motion, what I recognize.
My, I'm, I'm simply asking for consensus that we ask the manager to engage in a written conversation with the School Board about this matter, using this chart.
All right.
Mayor, we have a motion on the floor.
Commissioner, Commissioner Schwartz, go.
Thank you. Mr. Dodge?
Yes.
You, you write to the School Board at least twice a year on this, don't you? Like, this isn't new stuff. You say, look, we have officers, and this is the payment that you're providing us. This isn't correct, this isn't right, this isn't fair. You, you've been doing this like, like twice a year for at least the nine years I've been here, from what I can recall, am I off basis?
Well, I, I think it has changed slightly. The, uh, Broward County Police Association, they worked as a group on a revised SRO to come to an agreement on what needs to be done, and.
And I agree with you, sir.
And, and the SRO agreement is the one that they negotiated. Even though they may not have been satisfied with the number, this is what was presented and agreed upon between the Police Chiefs Association and Broward County School Staff.
So let, let me, let me be clear then, because I know that that work group had to do with standards of practice and expectations. Are you saying that that group also came up with the salary for an SRO?
No, they did not come up with it.
Exactly, my point.
However, in, as part of that agreement, the dollar amount came up. They did, in fact, try to secure more funds, but they were informed that due to the budgetary resources of the school district, this is the most they could do.
They received the same answer that you've been getting every six months for the last nine years. It's been the same thing. So if there's a consensus for you to write another letter, go for it.
Yeah, but the.
Yeah, 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 my full support, and, and Vice Mayor Good, we did have this sit-down with the School Board. It was, it was, uh, in two thousand fourteen, when I organized, uh, by motion, to get the School Board in the same room with us, ahead of the bond.
All right, let me.
And, and, and there was a discussion about SRO payment based off of that. And they said, well, we'll look at it, we'll get back to you. Here we are, seven years later, having the same conversation, let's, let's move the question.
City Clerk, call or roll, please, on number ten.
Mr. Second. Mr. Mayor, that's correct, you're on item number ten, there is a motion on the floor.
Call or roll.
Mayor, we're voting on the motion as read.
Call or roll, City Clerk for item ten.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear a second for the record, if you will, for the clerk's benefit. Was there a second in the motion?
No, I did make a second to the sign.
There is no motion.
For the main motion.
There is a motion, item ten is on the floor. Go ahead, City Clerk, call or roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Cyper?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dodge, I look forward to seeing a copy of your letter, thank you.
Okay, good. All right, ordinances, resolutions, City Attorney, you have your work cut out for you for the next five items.
Thank you for your patience, Mayor and Commission. The next several items, number twelve through sixteen, relate to the same applicant, a similar matter, and a matter which would require, but in my opinion legally, one public hearing, so that the applicant be heard on any of the items together, staff can be heard together as well. It is quasi to the extent that any member of the public has come out to the city to testify for or against the applicant, but with your permission and indulgence, Mayor and Commission, I'd like to read twelve through sixteen, put them into the record as we typically would do, and then open the public hearing in the context of the presentation by staff, the presentation by the applicant before the Commission, if there is to be a presentation, by, by Council, so.
Parliamentary question? Sir? Is, uh, uh, City Attorney, are you suggesting that we have one vote on all five items?
No.
No.
No, one, one, one open public hearing, because each item integrates within the public hearing concept, but motions would be separate for each item.
That's a shame, because I would have been open to it, but okay.
All right, City Attorney, go ahead. I would have liked to do that as well. Anyway, for the record, we'll open up with number twelve, which is a public hearing on a motion to pass proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine on second and final reading. It reads as follows, in accordance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending ordinance number seven eight nine as amended, which approved a development order for the Pembroke Lakes Regional Center Development of Regional Impic, that's the DRI, amending the Pembroke Lakes Regional Center DRI to delete a portion, as opposed to potion, that's a typo, I just noticed that, a parcel B from the DRI acreage decreasing commercial development intensity from one million seven ninety-four three hundred thousand to one million seven thirty-three seven eighteen square feet on the approximate two hundred and eight acre parcel of property generally located between Flamingo and hiatus roads and between Johnson Street and Pines Boulevard. generally located between Flamingo and Hyattus Roads and between Johnson Street and Pines Boulevard, providing for findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for irrecreditation, providing for transmittal to all applicable governmental agencies, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and finally, providing for an effective date.
Well done, City Clerk, City Attorney. Now, go ahead, take a breath and-
Just, thank you.
Go on. Second, no, 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 no.
Not yet.
Hold on. Go ahead, City-
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. You just want to get on the floor. The, number thirteen, again, another public hearing on a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash ten on second and final reading. This is in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter one five five, that's the city comprehensive zoning code, of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, by specifically amending section one five five point zero twenty-seven entitled zoning map, amending the hospital district standards to amend development criteria for the district as a result of hospital campus expansion and updates to the future short and long-term construction program for the approximate forty-three point five acres of hospital property generally located north of Pines Boulevard, south of Johnson Street, and east of Flamingo Road, as more particularly described in exhibit A attached here too, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date. Next item in the, in the item of five is item number fourteen, which is again another public hearing, is a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash eleven on second and final reading. It reads as follows, in ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter one fifty-five, that's the city's comprehensive zoning code of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, by specifically amending section one five five point zero twenty-seven entitled zoning map to rezone the approximate six point eight acre parcel of land generally located north of Pines Boulevard and east of Flamingo Road, as more particularly described in exhibit A, rezoning from the current zoning of B three references general business to H D, references hospital district, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, severability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Item number fifteen-
Thank you, City Attorney.
Item number fifteen is also connected in the public hearing concept. It's, it's motion to adopt proposed resolution number twenty twenty-one R seventeen, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the platnot amendment as a delegation request for the Pembroke Lakes Regional Center plat generally located north of Pines Boulevard, east of Flamingo Road, south of Johnson Street, and west of Hyattus Road, as more particularly described in exhibit A attached here too and incorporated herein, amending the existing platnot to reduce the commercial use from a million six ninety-four four eighteen square feet to allow an additional one hundred and thirty thousand square feet of medical office use on track B one. Authorizing city administration to take any action necessary to implement the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, severability, and finally, for, providing for an effective date.
Good job, City Attorney.
Last but not least, on the, uh, on the list here on the roster, is a proposed resolution number twenty twenty-one R eighteen. It's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the platnot amendment as a delegation request also for the Pembroke Pines Health Center plat generally located north of Pembroke Road and west of University Drive by amending the existing plat to allow for the development of an affordable housing project consisting of thirty-five two-bedroom units, five-one bedroom units, and fifteen studio units, authorizing the use of up to sixty-eight flexibility units, authorizing city manager and city administration to take any action necessary to implement the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, severability, and providing for an effective date. And if I'm not mistaken, Mayor and Commissioner, that would end the public hearing items that relate to the applicant.
Okay. Let me open it up for a public hearing. Anyone wanna speak on the public hearing?
And Mayor and Commissioner.
Mr. Benio, does anybody on the line?
If you want to be heard briefly, if you will, Mayor.
Hold on, hold on. It's a public hearing. I want the public to speak. Pub, Benio, any, anybody from the public?
So, thank you, Mayor. So we actually did receive a request to speak on, on behalf of the applicant for item number sixteen. Uh, this is for, uh, Mr. David Coviallo. Uh, I believe he's on. Uh, you can go ahead and speak, sir.
Okay, can everyone hear me okay?
Three minutes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, three minutes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, David Coviallo with offices at two hundred South Biscayne Boulevard in Miami. I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Carrefour Supportive Housing. They're a not-for, a not-for-profit affordable housing developer. Uh, just by the way, a little background, Carrefour has been a leader in the development of management of affordable housing since nineteen ninety-three. It completed, uh, over twenty developments in four counties. Uh, I've had the privilege of representing Carrefour for a number of years now, and I can say that they're an incredible organization to partner with. Uh, we're very excited to be here before you tonight in this first step to bring this important project to fruition. I know that many folks have worked very hard to get us to this point, and we're certainly grateful for that. With that said, uh, we're here tonight requesting approval of a delegation request for a platnot amendment and an allocation of flex units so that the project could move forward. Uh, I'm not, I won't repeat the, the details of the project, but it is a hundred and four, a hundred affordable supportive housing units, uh, as outlined in our letter of intent, which I believe is in your agenda package. The project is considered a special residential facility, category three, under your code, which is a permitted use. The project will offer supportive services onsite to residents to promote self-sufficient living and wellness, particularly for adults, uh, living with mental illness. And in, in addition, it's important to note that the request is consistent with the many policies in your code and comprehensive plan that promote and encourage affordable housing. If you would like, we can discuss the project in greater detail, but the site plan will be submitted as part of a separate review process. Again, tonight-
All right, thank you, sir.
... we're requesting approval of the delegation request. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Ms. Calhoun, would you want to come up and speak on?
Ms. Calhoun will tell you that I've overread some of the resolutions. I was so zealous in my efforts to, uh, save you time and effort that I read several more than you needed. So she will relate to the ones only affected in the hospital district and that-
Fine, put us on straight.
You will otherwise, uh, you just, you just kinda fast forward it, that's all.
Don't do it.
I will do that. Good evening, Hope Calhoun, uh, here on behalf of the applicant. Tonight with me, I have Representatives for Memorial Hospital as well as, uh, on the line. Just, uh, to clarify for the gentleman that's on the phone for item number sixteen, uh, what you just heard the, um, city attorney say was that in his, uh, overzealousness, his words, not mine, to read the resolutions and items for the memorial items, he accidentally read yours. So I'm just gonna move us back one item, sir, if you could just stay on the line, if that's okay for me.
Oh, we got it, we got it. We have his statement, that's fine.
Okay, perfect. So I, I can keep my presentation brief. We have a slideshow to present, but I don't have to. I'm happy to just answer questions. All of the items except for item number fifteen were heard previously at first reading, and they were all approved on first reading. The item number fifteen is a platnot amendment to allow for the conversion to medical office on the Toys R Us and Petco parcels. That's me trying to keep it brief. Again, we're here tonight and on the phone to answer questions.
We'll see with each item. City Attorney, you wanna go to each item now?
Yes. On the record, Mayor and Commissioner, and Ms. Calhoun has spoken, and she's effectively dealing with items number twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Sixteen is not part of the conversation, although a uniquely important item, I say that for the record now, is not part of her presentation. To the extent that Mr. Stam might, might otherwise seek to provide on the record information regarding any of the items, they all stand i- independently, although they're part of the public hearing process. And to that extent, Mayor, you may wish to inquire of Mr. Stam if he has any comments to add to the record, or any other affected party who might have called in, dialed in, logged in, or otherwise appeared this evening to, uh, support or otherwise object to any of those items.
All right, then let's go to item twelve.
Mayor.
And we'll take a, a motion.
Mayor.
Gonna need a motion first.
Motion to-
Item twelve.
Motion?
Motion by Commissioner-
Second.
Cyple, second by Commissioner Castillo. Commissioner Cyple on the motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, while I'm gonna, obviously, we're, we're taking them, I guess, one, one by one.
We are.
Um, for, for discussion and voting on each one, correct? Okay, okay, that's cool. Um, so what I'm gonna say, um, so I'm not gonna repeat it for each one of them, it's gonna pertain to all, uh, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. And even though fifteen is really kind of a new item, it really sort of encompasses what all the others are about. Um, and the hard, the hard work, uh, that has been put forward from Ms. Calhoun and, 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 uh, the Memorial Hospital people. But Mayor, as you know, we've had, um, several, many different meetings and presentations, um, by Ms. Calhoun and, and the others with the homeowners, uh, all, that are surrounding, all, all around there. And on each one of the, um, uh, issues that were brought forward, um, they were answered and provided, uh, uh, information that when the, the meetings were over, all of the homeowners were in one hundred percent support of, um, these, this project going forward, um, as it was stated to, you know, stated to them. Again, um, you know, the fact that, um, that we have to expand a cancer center is sort of a double-edged. We hate that it has to happen, but God, we're glad that it's happening and that it's there because it is needed, uh, you know, uh, unfortunately, it, it is needed. The expansion is needed. Um, and that was a lot of what we heard from the residents is that, um, they were very glad that it was coming there. But there, there's some of their biggest issues, and they have been consistent with their issues since the very beginning, was the no opening onto Johnson Street and was the no, uh, tall buildings along Johnson Street. And that has been addressed over and over again by this group that is here tonight, saying that there are absolutely no plans, no thoughts of that happening. Um, and what was presented, um, with not only the, at the, at the, that particular Toys R Us, uh, um, Petco, uh, location, the actual new building there, but then, um, I believe, a, a, a couple of other, uh, operating rooms were being put in, in the, in the daycare, uh, the same-day surgery, which was also discussed and brought forward, and the need for that to be there. The residents, again, had not one concern, uh, about any of that happening. And quite honestly, they were, I, I, I know I'm speaking for them, um, because I was there and I heard them, and they've told me that they are in one thousand support of this happening, and they can't wait for it, uh, you know, all to be there and to continue to be a, a good partnership with Memorial Hospital, uh, system in our city.
Great.
So Mayor, what I'm, I'll say that for twelve, and I won't repeat it for the other items, but it holds through for all of them. So, thank you, Mayor.
All right, City-
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to-
Vice Mayor, you have a comment on twelve?
Yes, I, I too like to make a comment in regards to, uh, the hospital district, uh, the items that are associated with it. Um, so I, I did receive, um, the corrected version. I believe that the recorded version was, uh, was, uh, not the, the, the one that was done at the second reading. I received the corrected version. I'm very comfortable with the language there. I thank council for, uh, providing the additional information I needed, uh, and, as well as city staff. So I, I'm very comfortable and, and Commissioner Cyple, you know, you, you are, uh, very, very helpful in, in my thought processes in this, as well, uh, giving me some of the historical perspectives. So, uh, I, I'm willing, ready to vote, and I won't need to repeat it for all the other items.
All right, I, I, for discussion, item twelve. Yes, Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you very much. I, uh, I wanna welcome this, this, uh, cancer center, and I wanna thank you for your commitment, not just to, um, health of our community, but also to the community itself. You've been a good neighbor, uh, and you've also been a good caretaker of our people, and I'm extraordinarily proud. There are few organizations anywhere in Broward County that have and enjoy the level of trust and support that Memorial Hospital and the memorial system does. Constantly, 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 uh, rated, uh, very highly by, uh, uh, by our residents, very, very trusted caregiver to our community, and I'm very, very thankful for this opportunity, uh, to see a, uh, a cancer center expanded in our community. It's certainly very needed. Particularly as people age, the older they get, more likely they will face this issue, the more likely they can come forward, hopefully early. And the earlier they come forward, the, 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 the better you all are at taking care of them, and I'm very, very proud of it. I'm also very thankful, uh, as Commissioner Cyple has mentioned, for your meeting with the, with the community about their traffic issues. On the subject of traffic, this commission has voted to place a traffic bridge on Flamingo and Pines Boulevard. It is a left-only turn.
Point of clarification, I don't-
We haven't voted on it.
I don't believe that we voted.
It hasn't been brought up yet.
Okay. This commission, it, it, it's a matter of public record. They, they voted in favor of it. And I have, I have opposed it.
We have not.
Point, point of clar-
City, City Attorney.
If I may, if I-
Police, like, City Attorney.
Point of clarification.
I'm the chair of the MPO.
Point of clarification.
We never had a vote. City Attorney, it was a discussion, correct?
I'd have to check the road, the notes and records on that issue, but if you're-
Please do, and bring it back, so that, so that they'll remember the vote.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I, I just like to make a point of clarification.
Excuse me, I have the floor.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
A point of clarification.
Are you, are you-
No, 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 it's in my head.
Point of clarification.
Now, all I'm saying is, is that what was brought before us was nothing more than a study.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Are we ready?
Okay.
But, but this, this study, this study is, uh, is projected to cost a hundred million dollars, and it is creating a great deal of strife among the residents of the city. They do not want it.
Point of clarification, Mr. Mayor.
They do not want it.
Mr. Mayor, point of clarification, sir.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Uh, the study is not going to cost a hundred million dollars.
And it's not for-
We're talking about the project.
City Attorney, can we move on? I wanna get under order, it's not part of the discussion.
Mayor, you, if I may quickly, you dignified the Vice Mayor's point of clarification, if it's not otherwise clarified. The, the Commissioner has the floor through the Mayor.
Thank you very much. Having the floor, I'd like to place this on the radar of the memorial system. Please take an interest in looking at this. It's gonna be a problem for traffic for your facility. On the one hand, it's a shame that, that we're even talking about it 'cause it's a hospital. But on the other hand, in a sense, having the hospital there is almost fortuitous, because I, I predict if this goes forward, and there's another one being suggested for university and, uh, uh, Pines Boulevard, if, if, if those move forward, I predict-
Point of clarification, Mayor.
-a disaster for the community.
First of all-
So I'm simply putting it on the agenda. I wanna congratulate you for your, uh, for your, uh-
It's the expansion of university that he's talking about, not Pines Boulevard. And it's not before us. And it's not, we brought it to us for information only.
Okay.
So that's where we are.
Okay.
So I'd like to get moving on item twelve.
So I wanna, so I wanna congratulate you on your project. I'm going to, uh, uh, vote for it. And let me also take the mo, a moment to recognize Ken Hetlich, who's retired now, right? He had his last day. I spoke to him just before he left, for thirty-three years of amazing service to, uh, not just the memorial hospital system, but the people of Broward County. Ken, if you can hear us, congratulations and good luck to you. Thank you very much.
Ken, Ken was pretty good, but Leo's doing a good job out there, too.
I remember, I remember years ago, cutting-
Not retiring.
The ribbon on the cancer knife. How many years ago was that?
Oh, yeah, wow.
Before I represented Memorial.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. City Clerk, call a roll, please.
On item number twelve, Mr. Mayor.
I, it is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor orders?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the number for the record is nineteen sixty-six.
City Attorney, item thirteen.
Yes, I've read thirteen as the record, Mayor. That's-
Can I need a motion?
Public, you do.
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Cyple?
Mayor, if there's any-
There a second?
Mayor?
What?
Just to make sure that there's no public comment, no one's dialed in.
Well, I always ask that public hearing.
Also, Mr. Benio, please.
Oh, do you have any more comments, Mr. Benio?
No, sir, not at this moment.
Okay, let's go.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Uh, this, go, and a discussion? City Clerk, call a roll, please. City Clerk, call a roll on thirteen, please.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good? Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor orders?
Mayor?
Yes. Sorry, I can't hear you.
Motion pass.
And the number for the record is number 1967.
Thank you, sir. We're on item 14, I need a motion.
Next up, 14, Mayor, that's correct.
Motion by Commissioner Cyple?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Castillo, discussion. Hearing on, City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Mayor orders?
Yes.
Motion pass.
And that number for the record, Mayor Commission, is number 1968 for item number 14. Next up, Mayor Commission is part of the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Deputy Clerk, could you lower your mic and speak into it, please? No, lower your mic and speak into it, no. We can't hear you. No, now we can't. That's good, you were, you, you, you were talking behind, it's hard to hear you. All right, item 14, need a motion.
The, the, Mayor, you haven't, you haven't adopted, Mayor Commission.
What's that?
That, you've, you've already, you passed on 14.
All right, let's go to 15, need a motion.
We're seeing, and that, the number for the record is 1968, un, under the next item, under the, uh, for the applicant is 15, Mayor, thank you.
All right, we got Commissioner Cyple mo, had a, moved it. Second by Commissioner Castillo, discussion. Hearing on, call a roll, City Clerk.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor orders?
Yes.
Motion pass.
And that resolution number for the record, permanent leave, number 3745, uh, is, uh, that ends, that ends all of this applicant's requests.
All right.
Unless you'd like to do any more while you're at it at the podium.
I, I think the gentleman on the line would like to do his presentation, but I would just like to say thank you to each and every one of you for your continued support. I get to stand up here and hear it all, but the people, uh, behind me and on the phone really did all of the work and City staff was amazing.
With the city.
Thank you very much, have a great evening, thank you.
All right, City Attorney, item 16.
Thank you, Mayor, although I've read this into the record because it is segregated from the others to make sure that any member of the public who might be confused by my zealousness, I'll read it again just to make sure for the record. It's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the plat note amendment, delegation request for the Pembroke Pines Health Center plat, generally located north of Pembroke Road and west of University Drive, by amending the existing plat to allow for the development of an affordable housing project consisting of 35 two-bedroom units, 51-bedroom units and 15 studio units, authorizing the use of up to 68 flexibility units and authorizing the city manager and city administration to take any action necessary to implement the intent of the resolution, providing for complex separability and providing for ineffective date.
So move.
Item 16.
Move by Commissioner Cyple, second by Commissioner Castillo, discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just have a quick question, is this affordable housing available to anyone or is this just available to a select group of folks?
City Attorney?
Uh, Mayor, the best answer would come either through Mr. Covielo or from Mr. Stam, who's also available on the line.
Um, yes, Mayor, uh, the housing, uh, is, is open to anyone, uh, but it, it is definitely catered towards, um, folks with mental disabilities and mental illnesses. So it, it is strictly affordable housing, but it's, it's catered, it's supportive housing, which means that the services offered there are catered towards, uh, men, people with mental disability.
All right.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, okay, I, further discussion. All right, City Clerk, call a roll, 16 please.
Mayor, just to make sure that the record reflects that's any, anyone who's dialed in, called in or otherwise, Mr.?
Do you have any more, Mr. Benio?
No, sir, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor orders?
There you go, yes.
And for the record, item, the permanent number for number 16 is.
That's a microphone.
3746, Mayor and Commission, thank you.
I am 17, sir.
May I read for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Good luck.
Item 17 is a, a public hearing and motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2021R-19, retrieved as follows, it's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, creating the city's rental, mortgage and utility assistance programs for utilization of the community development block rent, that's the CDBG CV3 funds, that's CV3, and approving the amendment to the 2020-2021 action plan consistent with the 2020 through 2024 consolidated plan for housing and community development programs, directing the city manager to submit the action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development and authorizing the city manager to execute all required documents, providing for complex separability, finally, providing for ineffective date. Item number 17 on the floor for discussion.
So move.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Benio, anybody want to speak on this item? Mr. Benio?
No, ma, no, sir.
All right, move by Commissioner Castillo, is there a second?
Cyple?
Commissioner Cyple, second, discussion. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes, put the mic down, please.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor orders?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Mayor, that number for the record is 3747, permanent number, next up is 18, Mayor.
Go ahead, City Attorney.
May I read, thank you, Mayor Commission, number 18 is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2021R-20, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, vacating 74.45 square feet of 10-foot utility easement along the south property line of 19186 Northwest 23rd Street in the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, as more particular than Exhibit A, providing for recreation, providing for complex separability, and finally, providing for an effective date. Item 18 on the floor, thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Cyple moves the item, is there a second?
Second.
Second by the Vice Mayor, discussion.
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo, got it.
Mr. Manager, can you, uh, place on the record what this is?
Commissioner, uh, Mr. Manager?
I, I would like Mr., I like Mr. Cooper, excuse me.
You got to put your mic in.
I'm trying to hear, but you got me blocked.
Mr. Cooper, are you on the line?
I'm blocked.
Keep, keep him.
Mr. Cooper?
I'm blocked. Mr. Mayor, um, mics are blocked, so I don't.
It can hear us, now it's on.
Commissioner, Mr. Cooper, are you on the line?
Or Mr. Kennedy.
Kennedy, Mr. Mayor.
Or Mr. Kennedy? Mr. Kennedy or Mr. Cooper, are you on the line? Mr. Sam, are you on the line? We need an answer first.
Carl is on the line, he's, uh, his mic is off, I don't know if he can. There he goes, he's coming on now, go ahead, Carl.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Kennedy.
Uh.
Go ahead, Mr. Kennedy. From now on, when we have these commission meetings, I want everybody here in person so we don't have to do this. It's ridiculous. I, we need somebody to answer questions.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, this is a utility easement that the city had at one time in Keystone Lake.
Uh-huh.
Uh, the utility, uh, and Carl Kennedy have both determined that this 10-foot utility easement is no longer needed, so it's being vacated.
Okay, does that answer your question? Who's getting it? Vacated to who? City Manager?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, to help the manager present, when it's vacated, the property owner would actually redown to the benefit of the vacation because of the fact that their property would no longer encroach, it would be their property.
Okay, and, and that property owner is willing to take the property?
My understanding is that the applicant requested.
It is, it is their request due to the, um, a problem with, um, a facility on that site.
Thank you. All right, further discussion. Call a roll on 18, please.
Commissioner Cyple?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes, my mic is blocked.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor orders?
Yes.
Motion pass.
The number for the record, Mayor, and per, permanent number is number 3748 for item number 18. Thank you, Mayor Commission.
Thank you, uh, before we read the next item and, uh, Mr. Dodge, I know we're going to read the item and, but this commission asks you to go back to Waste Pro and try to negotiate a contract or an extension that'd be in the best interest of the City of Pembroke Pines and this commission. And you did that and I want to thank you and I want to thank the, uh, Waste Pro for doing that and we're not done yet, we still got to keep going, but, so I'd like to read this motion and motion to approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement with Waste Pro for Solid Waste and Recycling Collection and Disposable Services for the period of June 1st, 2021 through January 1st, 2022. So move. Well, second by.
Second.
Uh, Commissioner, um, Schwartz, discussion.
Yes.
On item 19.
Yes.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
I need a, I need a microphone, I'm blocked.
Well, you want to use mine? I don't know what to tell you. All right.
Here's this one that, is it on your dais, Mayor, that is blocked?
What?
Do you have it blocked or is it?
I don't have it blocked.
It's like Keystone Cops.
Use my mic.
Try it again. Try it again, Joe.
Did you sit on your laptop, Joe?
I'll move, I'd like to get this meeting going.
Try it again, Joe.
As you can't do, you're blocked, go use the mic. There, move out of your way.
Push it again, try it again.
Just, just use my mic, go ahead. Oh, God, goodness.
Thank you, Mayor, it's only temporary.
Well, thank you.
It's only temporary. Um, I have a question for the City Attorney. The City Attorney, um, I appreciate the good faith effort, uh, made by the vendor and by the city manager, uh, to kind of wrap this thing up. What options do we have if negotiations break down before the, uh, first meeting of August? What options does this city commission have, um, that is not, that does not include rescission?
City Manager?
Is asking the City Attorney.
City Attorney?
Mayor, hello, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mayor, respond to the commission, a couple of observations to respond to your question. The item before the commission squarely on item number 19 is a, is a, is a motion to approve the proposed Second Amendment to the existing Waste Pro agreement, which expires, uh, or expired on May, May the 31st. You may recall, the commission, members of the commission, that at the last meeting of the commission, uh, the city commission, uh, in an effort to protect public health and safety and other items that were discussed by commission members, uh, essentially, um, vacated the process then currently in place, which is con, conducting the procurement process and essentially, uh, authorized and directed the city manager to make every good faith effort he could and his staff could to negotiate an extension, uh, of the existing relationship with Waste Pro, uh, as an interim step in the context of looking towards the potential extension of a contract with Waste Pro for a more long-term relationship. The manager can speak for himself, obviously, and staff, but at this point, before the commission solely is that Second Amendment, which provides for a six-month or up to a six-month extension, uh, as required by the motion and authorization given. That's the fact that I, as we know them legally and operationally on, on the dais this evening. Second part of which is that, 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 that's the sole item before the commission. And to the extent that the manager was given directions to proceed to negotiate, uh, the second or extension document, that's, that's an item which is in the, in the hands of the, of the manager, uh, as directed by the commission.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Okay, so I know that's the item now in front of us. What happens, what options do we have this evening in the event that we're unable to get the, the big, uh, the big one completed?
Couple of quick observations for the Mayor and Commission. The, the, the pro, the actual procurement process, uh, was, was essentially legally abandoned by the commission by appropriate motion and was taken up, uh, and that's why the item before you is the item before you this evening. Um, to the extent that the commission, if, if, if the manager fails to negotiate a, an acceptable contract to administration and to the commission, uh, the hypothetical option would then be in the context of public health and safety, um, to potentially reopen discussions with, with other proposers within the, uh, procurement process, although you're not in the procurement process, but you also know that under the procurement code, the city has a predominant o, option, uh, which is contained in Chapter 35 of the city's Code of Ordinances, which is the, um, for the benefit of the city option, which is, uh, in Section 35.18, which is legally exercisable, should the commission choose or be compelled to look elsewhere in the future.
A, and define future, when is that, when does that occur? How, how much, how much, uh, latitude do we have? Is it something, uh, in the best interest of the city? Is it something that we should, uh, perhaps bring up under, uh, old business or new business tonight so that we can leave the chambers knowing that we're moving forward?
If I may, uh, Mr. Mayor, to the commission, I, I recognize your question. I don't choose to overbear on the manager's ability to, to give you his best approach as to how to get from point A to point B, but I would be respectful of that issue if you would choose to inquire of him because that's, that's a material fact that you'd yet to hear on the record.
City Manager?
Yes, um, I have a question, I'm not sure of your answer. I think the question was, if perhaps I'm unable to negotiate the full seven-year, what is the next course of action? I heard you say that the code, uh, provides us to negotiate with others. I'm not too sure what that means.
I would assume that that, 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 that means the others that were within the, the context of the procurement process that was abandoned by the commission and that, that would be the, that would be one of the options, legal options.
So it would be the other proposer?
Yes.
Because there are only two.
That's correct and the record reflected that on the motion directing under this item before you.
Okay, I, I just, I just wanted to ask that question, you know, uh, tonight so that we can be clear of, you know, what summer brings. I hope we're able to get this thing, you know, finished up, uh, maybe by the next meeting, City Manager, that would be awesome, thanks.
Yep. Thank you. You can have your chair back now. I know I wanted, but. Yeah.
You look good in it. Oh, look at him wiping everything off there.
All right, item 19, yes, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to, I'm sorry, thank you very much. I, um, I just want to have it stated for the record, what is, what is the actual impact at this point to the residents in terms of a, of an increase in their rates?
Two minutes.
What is, what is the exact implication for the next seven months on, on, on this, uh, contract?
City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, if, i, if in fact, well, until September 1st, there is no impact whatsoever. Between now and August 1st.
No impact means zero percent.
No increase in any.
Zero percent increase?
There is no increase in the monthly, uh, rate to the homeowner. What happens between now and beginning of August, we present an item back to the commission on August 4th, hopefully we will be successful in bringing back, uh, a contract for a seven-year, uh, term as we advertised. And if in fact, uh, we, staff feel comfortable with the recommendation to forward, uh, that to the commission, then we would have that number available to you. If we are not, uh, successful in what we believe is a fair, uh, number, then, uh, the option is what the city attorney, uh, presented in, uh, answer to Commissioner Schwartz's item, which means then we would be, bring back to you, we were not successful, therefore, you need to direct us what we do as we move forward, uh, until we can find a solution by January 1st of, uh, 2022.
Just work very hard.
So I, I, I was a very long answer to a very, uh, I just wanted to make it very clear. So between now and September 1st, there's a 0% increase?
Correct.
And between September 1st to January 1st, there is a 13% increase?
There, there, if we can, I'm sorry, you're correct. If in fact, we cannot reach an agreement, we, we have this contract in place, yes, it reflects about, uh, $3 a month, uh, rate increase to the homeowner.
But there may not be one if you're able to strike a deal. Vice Mayor's got the floor.
Yeah, I, the worst-case scenario at this point seems to be, based on the prior meeting, is we have a 0% increase between now and September 1st.
Right.
And between September 1st and January 1st, we have a 13% increase. That's the worst-case scenario that we stand at this point, is that correct?
That is correct, but there may be another option that I would present to you.
I understand that, but just right now.
Okay.
Further discussion, yes.
Mayor?
Uh, who is that? Yes.
Cyple and.
Uh, Commissioner Castillo, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, this has been, uh, this has been frustrating for me and for, uh, for many who've contacted
Uh, this has been, uh, this has been frustrating for me and for, uh, for many who've contacted me, who've been watching these, uh, uh, these events, uh, I think it's a small miracle that we are even here talking about a, uh, uh, an extension, which we must have because somebody has to pick up the garbage, uh, but what's not being discussed is that the commercial providers of the, of the taxpayers of the city, who we also represent, are going to be paying a, a, a pretty hefty increase between now and, uh, and, and the next contract. The way that we kept, uh, residents from having to pay was to load the cost that the provider must have because this contract is upside down, and, and that's what has been the problem with service, uh, provision and, and elsewhere, there isn't enough money to provide the service properly by the contractor, by the vendor, by the, the Carter, uh, is going to be paid by the business community, it's just that simple. The, uh, the, 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 the money is insufficient to keep the service levels at the level that not just the city wants, but the Carter wants. They're a good company, they want to provide this service, but the, 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 the contract is too slim to allow them to provide it, they're not, they're not a nonprofit corporation. So, we, what exactly is the difference, Charlie, in dollars, uh, uh, over, over the term of the interim contract that the commercial providers are going to pay? In documentation that you provided to me, it was a million fifty, is that correct?
City Manager?
That was not, um, just the commercial, uh, I think Mark Gomes is online, he has all of those numbers in front of him, he can answer your question directly.
Uh, good evening, this is Mark Gomes, Procurement Director, City of Pembroke Pines, um, the commercial portion was about nine-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars for the seven-month period, um, so obviously, the contract earlier than that, that would change depending on the rates of the new contract.
Okay, and then there was an additional eight-hundred-and-twelve thousand on the residential side that had been mitigated down to, uh, four-sixty-five, right?
Uh, yeah, so if the increase went into effect right away, it would have been a higher number, but, uh, since the increase only goes into effect on September first, it would only be four-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars total.
So ru- so roughly speaking, we're talking about one-point-five million, roughly speaking, and my question is, how, and Vice Mayor asked it, but I want to be more speci- specific, how is the four-sixty-five, which is the mitigated amount from the original eight-twelve, because we were talking about one-sixteen a month extra on the residential side, how is that to be absorbed, the four-sixty-five?
Mr. Gomes?
Mr. Mayor, if I.
Mr. Manager?
If I may, I, I would rather have that conversation privately with you, only because it's going to be part of my next negotiations.
Yeah, it makes sense.
And I'd rather not play my cards to the vendor at this point, how that's going to be handled.
All right, that's fair, so, so, but, 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 we're, we're back to the bottom line of what the Vice Mayor said, at least for the time being, while, uh, well, let me rephrase that, not, not go beyond, at least for the time being, there will be no extra cost paid by the, uh, residents of Pembroke Pines, the single-family homes, but the commercial businesses of our city will pay more, is that correct?
That is correct, and based upon the bids that we received, uh, it's within that framework of what was bid by both companies, so, uh, it ha- it has nothing to do with the residential, that was, actually, it's a little less than what the bid amount was for commercial.
Well, I, I just want to commend you, Mr. Dodge, for, uh, uh, for negotiating this with the cards that you were given, uh, very, very difficult task, and, uh, I'm sorry that, uh, that it went down that way, but I'm, uh, I have no choice, we, the garbage has to be picked up, this isn't something I, uh, I care for, but, uh, I'm going to, uh, I'm going to go in favor, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Commissioner.
Mayor, you recognizing me?
Yes.
Oh, okay, sorry, um, uh, Mr. Dodge?
Yes.
Um, I, I just want to, I, I really want to make sure that I'm stating this correctly again, right now, for our residents, there is no increase until September one, at which point, I know that it's been mentioned that it was a thirteen percent increase, but actually, so that, that actually turns out to be a three-dollar-a-month increase, correct?
So we stated on the record.
Okay, and so I want to make sure that that's what it was.
All right.
And, and also something that you just said, um, Mr. Dodge, that while I, while I hate also that, um, commercial rates are, are, are going up, because I, you know, I hate for that to happen for, for any of our businesses, um, but those rates that are being quoted had absolutely nothing to do with what we were talking about with residential, because those were, those were numbers that were already.
Right.
Provided in the response, the original response.
Right.
Uh, is that, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so the two, so, so it wasn't like we took off of one, or we added to one to pay for the other, it was already a decided, uh, it was already a number that, that had been, had been put out there for discussion.
Yes, and we di- and we did look at three other cities and what their rates were, and, uh, the rates that are being proposed are substantially less than a couple neighboring communities as of today.
Okay, so you, you mentioned three others, three other cities, I would assume, uh, cities close by, and can you, can you give us a little bit more, like what, how, what their, a percentage of, of what their rates were increased, were they, were they doubled? Were they?
Well, um, if I may, I have the chart here, make me find it, I think Mark has it, he can grab it faster than me.
Just want to make sure ours is a little.